Okay. Good evening. It is six o'clock and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order. I'd like to just test Councilman Hin again is participating remotely. And he's going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge if he can.
Get stepped away for just a moment, I'm sorry.
Okay, so someone else can pull up the invocation, please. Okay, Tom Lambert, Councilman Lambert is going to lead us in the pledge and the invocation, thank you. Right, ready?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, we'll now have public comment. And we'll have thirty minutes, each speaker can have up to three minutes. And we will start with Linda Shulyn. Please. And Ms. Shulyn, when you get up, if you'll just make sure the green light is on the microphone. Or here comes somebody to check. Oh, sorry, Richard. Okay, and if you'll just speak into the microphone, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
I live on Vermac Road.
Nope, nope, you gotta talk into the microphone so we can hear you, sorry. They can hear you.
Been in my house forty-three years, had a neighbor that was nice and he got tired of his house, he wanted to rebuild. So he tore that house down and I have been living in a almost two and a half year nightmare ever since that time. And I have a picture here, can that be shown? Anyway. Two and a half years at forty-seven, oh, four-seven-zero-zero Vermac Road. So the house was tore down, they were gonna rebuild it because they couldn't build a large enough home. So the house was demolished, lots of debris was left in the yard. There was no lawn maintenance, weeds grew two to three feet high. Dumpsters were brought in to put all the garbage and stuff in. They also added a beautiful pit stop toilet for all of the workers. I love that thing, I would love to have one. So I've had to look at that beautiful potty for over two and a half years. The other thing with the property there. After the guy moved out, they plowed the front yard down, got rid of the weeds, they brought in gravel. Got a little piece of this nice gravel here. It's all over the yard sidewalk in the street. So rain has been washing stuff down into the street sidewalk for years. They also hit my brick mailbox one day, knocked it over, I had to pay somebody to get it moved back up. The worst thing I've had to endure was November, December of twenty-twenty. The workers over there, when the dumpster was there getting ready, had dumped gravel in. They dumped it out and the guy left with the truck. They had still up where he had, so it was up and they went from the hill down the street. And it ripped the power lines, utility stuff down out of their yard. And they pulled the line that was connected into my house, ripped all the bricks out of my side of my garage, through my garage, tore up my attic. I had to work for five months with insurance companies, attorneys trying to get that settled. There was ten thousand dollars of damage done, though that happened right before Christmas. So Christmas was not quite as enjoyable as it had been. It took five months to get that issue revamped.
Thank you, Ms. Shulyn.
My time's up. So something needs to be done about residential flaws when building. Nobody should have to put up with what I have put up with. And I have put in emails and everything, so it's, it doesn't work. And I've got pictures here if anybody would like to look at these.
Thank you. So, public comment in the state of Georgia is one way because of open meeting rules. Bob Hickey, please.
Thank you, my name is Bob Hickey, I've been a resident of Dunwoody for forty-plus years. I appreciate your time tonight, I'm here to talk about my views and many of my fellow citizens' views on about, about the proposed expenditures for park bonds, park acquisition, park development, roads and all of that. The proposal is about a hundred and eighty projects costing over five hundred million dollars. Just coincidentally, that the first ten project aggregate about fifty million dollars. And I'm opposed to it, I'm okay on any expenditure for park bonds, park acquisition, road building, when the city lives within their means. Okay, living within their means to me means no tax increase, no bonds, okay? No bonds in any form. I don't, the city has raised taxes five to six times in the ten, eleven years they've been a city. And you'll say, no, we're still at the same millage rate. But when the tax digest goes up and you keep the millage rate the same, you've raised taxes. And that's what you've done already. The, the city money has gone from revenues of about eighteen million when the city was formed to over forty-two million in two thousand and twenty. There should be well enough revenue for the city to do what is necessary. We have a spending problem in the city, not a revenue problem. So I'm opposed to any tax increase, however you call it, whether it's a direct tax increase, a special millage rate, a special tax district, or the mayor's birthday fund. I don't care what you call the tax increase, I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to any bond obligations, whether it's general bond obligations or special revenue bonds or popsicle bonds. It doesn't matter what you call them, I think the city ought to live within her means. And if you're not going to live within your means, then I think you ought to abide by your oath and let the citizens vote on either one of those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Mahab, I'm Ab, Bob, sorry, Lee.
Good evening, City Council, thanks for letting, giving me the opportunity to speak here. I think I've had the pleasure of meeting one or two of you in the past back when I volunteered. Today, I actually just wanted to kind of chat a little bit about an article that was recently written in the Dunwoody Courier in reference to the legal fees that the city is incurring as a result of the police lawsuit. In preparation for today, I've reviewed some of the very few redacted itemized invoices from the law firm, as well as skimmed through the hundred and fourteen-page document on our budget twenty-twenty-one, as well as reviewed a little bit of the public comment section of the March twenty-eight meeting. Ultimately, what I've not done is reviewed any of the allegations, is that's just irrelevant, that's not my job, that's the jury's job with the evidence. I'm completely in favor of us fighting a potential frivolous lawsuit. I'm completely in favor of the city having to be forced to defend itself. I am not privy to the conversations, I do not know how many people have been deposed. I do not know pretty much anything in regards to this active lawsuit in reference to possibly if we've attempted to settle with the guy, settle with the other people. All I know is that we've been billed a lot. In fact, according to the Courier, it appears that we've been billed over four hundred, possibly reaching to a half a million dollars. And my concern, I think the problem that I have is, I'm concerned we're getting ripped off. We have a private contractor on one side and we have a city government on another side. It's way too easy for them to try to do whatever they need to do to just rip us off, rip us off, rip us off. Unfortunately, we're in a new situation where we have new litigation, which is a problem. And of course, now we're a little bit deeper in the hole, but my biggest fear is we continue going this, we defend ourselves. Now suddenly, we're in, we're in trial and the guy sends us a bill or the law firm sends us a bill for a quarter million dollars, just because, why not? Again, we're a city government and that's the problem. So the solution that I think might work out, as silly as it might sound, is maybe to hire another firm simply to review the reasonableness of the legal fees that we've incurred. I mean, that might not cost that much, five or ten grand. Or being that we're a city government, I wouldn't be surprised if we had, if an attorney would jump up and do it pro bono, just to review the reasonableness of it. Honestly, if you want to set up a special commission, I'd volunteer for that, I'm happy to help. I'm not an attorney, so there's no client privilege, so I'd be forced to review redacted comments. But ultimately, I think the problem is, I'm concerned we're getting ripped off from this law firm. I would like something done to review the reasonableness of this. Having a law firm, having another law firm review them will at least keep them in check going forward or get them a little worried about what was billed in the past. I've seen it before, lawyers. God bless them, you know. So we'll just put it that way, but that's, that's my comment, that's the problem I think we face. I know some of the citizens are concerned, that is the solution I'm proposing. I thank you for what you do, I thank you for being out here tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Gerald McCarty, I think it's McCarty, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm living Dunwoody, Georgia, been here, it's in my fiftieth year. And I've enjoyed it. As you can tell, I'm retired. Before I get into that, I want to second what Bob Hickey said. I think he's right on point and I think, I hope you're listening. And I'm on fixed income. Over the last year, probably less than a year, I've lost at least ten percent of my purchasing power. So we don't need to burden the taxpayers, and there's a lot of retired people here in Dunwoody with more taxes. I, I think each of you remember the road to nowhere. That is a road that goes one quarter around Dunwoody that was taken from a four-lane road down to a two-lane road. And it, I think in total tax dollars, not all Dunwoody dollars, we spent two million dollars, about two million dollars. And Madam Mayor, you may remember, and I want you to remember, the guy that, your predecessor is no longer in office. He had a sign, when we went to the ballot box, he had a sign around his neck, invisible sign, a road to nowhere. Please, no new taxes and no new bonds, and that results in taxes, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We'll have another session at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Now, I believe Mr. Sparks. Will have a presentation for us.
Hello, Council, Nathan Sparks, I'm the chair of the Sustainability Committee. And we're approaching Earth Day, which is going to be on April twenty-second. And as the schedule usually holds, this time of year, we honor our sustainability heroes. For the past ten years, the city has recognized individuals who have a particular affinity and commitment to sustainable practices. And the committee reviewed several nominees over the past couple of months. And we have some of the awardees with us. And this, right here, is Laura Johnson, who I happen to know well. Because Laura came to me as a scout leader looking for a Eagle Scout project some time ago. And her interest is in beekeeping. And she not only has that personal desire, but she loves to share this knowledge and this, this passion for native ecosystems with the youngest among us, as well as some of the older folks that are interested. Laura co-chaired our Bee City USA program with us and helped establish be-dunwoody.org, helped develop the website that presents cool facts about pollinators and the ecosystems that they depend on. Most bees, I've learned from Laura, are native to Georgia, not just the honeybees that she loves that make wonderful honey that many of our beekeepers make through the Dunwoody Nature Center, which Laura also supports their beekeeping program. So when her nomination came before our committee, it was met with a lot of acceptance, but we also looked at quite a few other folks. One gentleman's actually in the room and I'll mention him a little later. But Laura, we thank you for your dedication to Dunwoody, to our community. And I'm very pleased and honored to present you with the twenty-twenty-one Sustainability Hero Award. So, well done. And I think, if it would please the council, are we gonna take a photo with Laura?
We're gonna take a photo, so.
Laura also championed the creation of this sign.
Just a quick, just to say thank you, really, and I really appreciate all you guys do. And I would be totally remiss in accepting this without saying something about Nathan because I could not have done this without Nathan and Jennifer and Kathy Florence and all those guys, so, and all your support. So, thank you very much.
And I want to say something before you step away. So, one of the things that our community partners allow us to do is to stretch our resources and to provide programs and support for our residents that we otherwise couldn't. And so just as an example, on social media, pretty continuously at certain times of years, people ask questions about bees. And it's very nice to have skilled, experienced residents who can answer. Just as recently as one day last week, there were questions about a swarm in Brook Run Park. And there were lots of people who stepped forward, some weren't in town, some were. But it, it's very helpful to have those resources local, so thank you, Laura. And, and everyone else doing the great work, so thank you. Absolutely.
So that was Laura Johnson for our individual award. And we also have a practice of recognizing an organization within Dunwoody. And there were several nominees. And this year, I'm proud to announce that the Dunwoody Community Garden and Orchard is here to accept their award as the organization that has supported and promoted gardening, of course, through organic practices. They provide education series every month. And if you haven't been, you should go, they're well attended by master gardeners, experts in their field. They produce, of course, food for themselves, but they also produce food for the Malachi food pantry. There's over thirty garden plots that produce three thousand pounds of fruits and vegetables each year that go to people who are in need in our community. This takes care by so many of the gardeners. And they are, many of them are here today and they, they help share their love and their passion for eco-friendly gardening and composting to help other people take that into their homes and into their neighborhoods. So, I mentioned that there was an individual that was nominated for, for the individual award. Art Simon is here, and I'd like for Art to come up along with Cindy McGill, Ann Bone, and the whole crew, because this is a great group of people. Okay, so they're gonna gather here and Cindy's gonna make a few remarks.
Thank you so much, Nathan, we really appreciate it. So here we are in the village, right? But it takes a gardening village to do what we do over at the Community Garden, really to support all those programs that Nathan just described. So, lots of different folks here, but we all have one thing in common, that we're passionate about gardening. So he's mentioned Art, Art is our greenhouse manager, he has a whole army of volunteers that enable us to grow beautiful organic seedlings for not only our community garden, but for other community gardens in the area. We have the teams, and we have some of the members represented here that are part of our farmer and harvest teams that actually tend and harvest those plots that Nathan just mentioned. In the, in the ninety-degree heat in August, they're out there watering and picking so that we can make those contributions to the local food banks, both Malachi Storehouse and the Community Action Center. We have not one but two teams of master gardeners at play over at the Community Garden. So almost twenty master gardeners, just really ready to share their knowledge and to help support our activities there. Those teams are led by Richard Osterholtz and by Janet Hanser, right here. We have a dedicated board and lots and lots of other volunteers, but I'd say especially one of the biggest support arms for us is right in front of us. And that's our city, our city government, and especially our awesome Parks and Rec Department because they have just been incredibly supportive of everything we do. So with all of your support, we'll keep on growing and we'll keep on teaching, so thank you so much.
Time for another photo.
Jennifer has the box.
So, to our friends from the Dunwoody Community Garden. You provide a bountiful amount of food for your families, your friends, and for our more vulnerable residents who depend on Malachis. And you provide fresh produce in the thousands of pounds a year for Malachis. What you do that's equally as important to me is that you build community. In a world where it's hard to connect even with your neighbors, you offer our residents and neighbors the opportunity to gather together, to do something productive and fun and that brings joy, and I'm sure sometimes frustrations, not being a gardener myself. And you also, as valuable as our partnership is with you, you are a valuable partner to the city. Just recently, with the art partnership, with the fantastic opening, with the buckets and the different colors and the bright colors. You know, you give people a reason to come to a part of the park they might not explore. And so we are very grateful for your service to our community and thank you very much and keep on growing. Thank you. And congratulations on your award.
Thank you, to continue, just briefly, the Sustainability Committee has presented a update on its sustain, our sustainability plan. And as we look back at the twenty, year of twenty-twenty-one, we adopted a new plan. And you supported the, an ambitious plan to reach the very top level of the Atlanta Regional Commission's Green Communities Program, which will be the platinum level. We're proud that we're, you know, today at the gold level. And that's because this council and the staff have worked hard to make a lot of sustainable practices a part of who we are as a community. Most recently, we just saw a resumption of our recycling events. We had fourteen thousand pounds of electronics donated for repurposing reuse. So those raw materials don't have to be mined again from the earth. We are, I believe, gonna install some EV-powered charging stations here at City Hall and some other places to help connectivity, perhaps, I'm not sure if you funded that yet. You're gonna be reviewing a tree ordinance, things that really will help our community keep its tree canopy and be comfort, more comfortable as we walk along our streets. We've created with the staff a short-term work plan. You will, it's in your email, the public can take a look at it from things that the committee has worked on. And we've engaged with the staff to assess in a pretty pragmatic fashion, you know, what's possible, what's not. So we took that feedback and we created those things that are to be maintained, those things that are to be prioritized, and some of those things that aren't on the list yet. Frankly, some of those other areas I find to be important, like recycling and multifamily housing developments, purchasing practices, and educating our businesses and our residents on sustainable practices. But those things weren't pragmatic for the next couple of years. What, what are in the priorities need to be funded in the twenty-three timeframe because we were really operating without a lot of insight to the actual budgets. So it's gonna be important, Council, for you to take a look at those priorities, decide what's your priorities, and apply the right prioritization to Mr. Linton's staff and the budgets that, and make him go, right? So how are we going to do that? And then how are we going to train our, our new staff that comes on board? Because that's one gap I observed in twenty-one, we did not conduct training of the new staff that came on board. We were during, in the middle of a pandemic, we did a lot of great things to start. Allegra has done a fabulous job in her assignment with Richard McLeod. So, not, not to diminish that, but just an observation that we can do more. So I, I look forward to this year, some new tactics that we're having with the, the staff to get together routinely. You'll see that there's, there's a routine for our five pillars and we're going to be meeting this week to take a look at the transportation efforts around sustainability. Last month, we looked at trees and green space. You all are welcome, as is the public, to attend our, our monthly meetings. We meet Thursday mornings from eight to nine-thirty, we're gonna continue Zoom this month, we'll see how it goes. The committee likes that sustainable approach, but we're gonna get together for a retreat again this year. So, I believe that more time and a, and a leadership commitment within the, the staff should be designated so that someone can quarterback this, if you will, to say, these are the areas of priority for council and these are the things that ought to make their way into the budget and the action plans. So that's my view of it with the committee behind me. And I know that the priorities there may raise some questions and probably not for tonight, but perhaps for Thursday morning, we could talk about those. If you'd like to have a further review of those priorities, I and the committee are certainly available.
Thank you. Thank you, probably don't go, I imagine there may be some questions. I'll start with Councilman Hin again, just because I can't actually see him at the moment, but I know he was, hold on, there he is. John, just say if you have any questions.
No, I have no questions, can you hear me, you okay though?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you. All right.
Appreciate you.
Continue down this row, Joe, anything?
Hey Nathan, thank you all, again, it's, it's a community effort, you're all volunteers, you're doing all this out of, out of your love, and really, really appreciate that. You've got three other folks up here that were on your commission as well, committee. So, yeah, I'd love to hear back when you have that, the, the action plan priorities. love to hear back when you have that, the, the action plan priorities. We just kind of went through an exercise of putting them in categories, ranking them, weighting them, right? So that might help us to provide focus, potentially. Don't want to add too much to your work, but that list that you provided, could you potentially kind of do a high, medium, low, you know, if, if you wanted to do that, that would help us focus?
Appreciate that suggestion. We can work that with staff. I mean, some of this, I think, has to do with that which is within reach and within budget. But the, the full list of priorities, we think, could be achieved in the, the next 12 months.
The list that you've provided? Yeah, it's you. Okay.
Well, to progress towards it. There's obviously the first one up that says there's going to be a park a half mile from everyone. That's, that's unlikely in the next 12 months, but work that can be done and prioritized towards that. And obviously, the council has made commitments.
Yeah, thanks. And yeah, I definitely would love to connect with you all about, you know, specific ask for the 2023. So I'm going to get with you all one-on-one offer. Headed to one of your meetings. I'm due to do that. So thank you all.
Councilman Harris?
I guess this is just a question for staff and for my edification as well. Anything that would be in the sustainability plan and the money comes from whose budget?
It's in my budget.
Okay, even if it involves like transportation, or was that be, so Public Works as well? So it's going to be a balance between the two?
Correct, and parks and rec.
So it's a little bit of everybody. So my question is, as we're looking towards 2023, how do you all come, I guess I'd like to understand the process, how do you all come to actually put money for some of these initiatives? And how are we going to decide? Like, Michael can say, yes, I could put this from Public Works in the budget. Like, how, how do you foresee all that working?
When we do anything, we take an environmental perspective look at it. Michael does transportation. That's his main objective. So in that, there are several sustainability things. He may not call them out specifically, but they're in there, so.
Catherine?
Rob?
Yeah, Nathan, again, thank you. Thank the whole committee for everything you do. As Joe noted, too, you've got three former members of the committee currently on the council, so we, we understand and appreciate the hard work you're doing. I do, I do have a question. I know the Platinum status for Green Communities for A R C is, is a goal, and I think it's, it's a great one to have. It's a good recognition of the efforts you're doing. What specifically from this action items list, I mean, how many of those do we need to check off to actually attain that status? Do you, do you have a, a way of achieving that with certain, I guess, a prioritized part of this action item list?
We, we certainly could. The Atlanta Regional Commission assigns points to different things, and we could estimate some of these efforts getting us there. When the council adopted the plan, we didn't adopt a timeline for getting there. We, we set forth that the committee would work with staff to prioritize areas that we thought were pragmatic and within reach. I think if we do these items, or, or some of these items, not all, we'll get to the Platinum level. And I don't think that there's an expectation that the entire plan would be achieved in any short order. It's an ambitious plan.
Yeah, and, and I, I like a lot of the items on, on your action item list, deal with trails and connectivity and things that are personal pages of mine, but I also think are great for the city. So I was, I was happy to see that. You made a comment about, obviously, resources are going to be a big part of getting this done. There's financial resources, but also staff resources. Are there things that, that, that the city needs to provide, the Sustainability Committee, that we aren't currently providing to help achieve these goals or push, push the agenda a little bit further forward? Is, is there something that we need to, that you, that you would request from the city?
Well, as the mayor pointed out, and you all know, we're volunteer group, and we only have a certain amount of time, which is literally that which we devote once a month, and then some degree of follow-up on our particular pillars offline. It's going to require the staff to navigate the budgeting cycle and these priorities amongst all of your other priorities to, to do the work. We can't as a volunteer corps. We're here as a, Councilman Henigan advised us a couple years ago, to take a look at, are we achieving our plan? And I'm here to tell you, we're on our way, but it's going to take you leaning in with staff to prioritize that which can get us further. If, if you like an assessment with staff on, you know, the points and the scoring, that's fine, but I don't really think that's what should motivate us. It should be more about the feedback from the community on the desire to have connectivity between our parks and safe roads and safe walkways, and those are a couple of the areas. Safe routes to school. Councilman Harris, I know that you've mentioned that before, and how can we, we as staff and Richard's team work with Public Works to say, here's a better way to get from point A in that neighborhood to point B, which is the school, and back again? And is there something that you all would suggest would be the right path through, you know, some corridors that might ruffle a few feathers, but ought to be done? So.
Thank you. Thanks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank your committee for us. Next, our city manager's report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In the report, I want to draw out the police portion of it here, where we have the Flock license plate readers. And we are adding those cameras to the old Austin Elementary School site. But throughout the report, as I point out numerous times, are the license plate readers and how they help us solve many crimes. I'm not going to go through all the different items through here, but it is a very in-depth report from the Police Department of what's occurred over the last, since our last meeting, frankly. Public Works, Shandley-Dunwoody Road, Pilar Road, design phase is an advertising request for proposals coming out this month. We also have Spalding at Shandley-Dunwoody intersection. We have the sidewalk on Shandley-Dunwoody Road, and it's working in the last section on the west side of Spalding. We also, if you've driven out there recently, you'll notice the signal equipment has been installed, and the contractor is completing the wiring there. That project is looking nice. I drove through it again this morning to take a look, and it is coming on. The, a lot of the stuff is at grade. Now I say stuff. Along the right-of-way is at grade. The retaining wall for the neighbors is up. I think we've done an outstanding job with the neighbors along that to have minimal impact on a, on that size project. Also, we have the Georgetown Gateway. Atlanta Gaslight has provided a final completion date of April 15th for their new gas main. As y'all know, that's been a very, anytime we work in the right-of-way and with utilities, it is disruptive, and that's a very congested area. So I'm glad they're going to finalize that piece. That was a major element to get the gas line relocated. Winter's Chapel Trail, Phase One, Georgia Power completed the overhead power line relocation. Comcast has now relocated their lines, and the city's contractor has completed 370 feet of curb and 200 feet of path in March during that time. For the Parks Department, we have lemonade days coming up, April 20th through the 24th. And we have May 5th is when the Food Truck Thursdays restart. So that's some fun stuff coming up within the Parks Department. The staff also held the pre-construction meeting with the project team for the construction of the park at Perimeter Center East that was held last month. And so that project will be coming out of the ground very soon. Kate Borden and Brent Walker both received their certified Park and Recreation Professional Designation from the National Recreation of Parks Association. Moving to community development on April 12th, and I think, you know, Richard's here, if we have any further questions on this, but we have it coming before. The city is the Gold Kiss Road to be renamed to Campus Way, and that's to make, you know, for the new improvement going over there. That's a great thing that we're able to do, to change, kind of rebrand that, that building over there. Once again, that's an iconic building for the area, and I'm glad it's being repurposed. We do have some text amendments that are coming up. Also, text amendment to Chapter 27 to regulate the color temperature. This is for lighting in the perimeter area. If you remember, we did have a formal council member that had that as one of the, the main focus for the lighting in this area, and to have it, I think it was, I think they call it the K levels of lighting, a lesser, not quite as much of a white light, more of a, what I call a soft white. We'll call it that. And then also the text amendments for the building design requirements in the perimeter center overlay. And that's been a topic for us, is rezoning recently had, to make some modifications to the text there. And also, another text amendment of Chapter 16 is coming up, which is put some more regulations on tree removal for residential properties. So that's coming up shortly for the council. One thing internally, the IT, we did add a new phone system within the city. The other one was outdated. This is, of course, is a, is an IP-type phone system that is now throughout City Hall. The, the other system we had, we actually moved with it from the old building, so this, this one is more up to date and has more capabilities for communications. The Dunwoody Digest was delivered, and as far, this is the April slash June 2022 edition. There's a little picture of it in your, in your report. We also have the, still promoting the Edge City 2.0, for the citizens to engage in that. Finance, we have our external auditors will continue work through the end of April. And also, finance and human resources are implementing a new payroll system for the city. The municipal court, the department has disposed of over 402 cases and reset 42 cases in the last month. And also, we have a request for qualifications that was posted for municipal court judges, and I believe that's closing soon. Close on the 6th. Thank you. Thank you. Human resources, we also have a, an upcoming employee appreciation breakfast. This is something that we've tried to do a couple of times, but due to COVID, we, we had to move it a couple of times out. I think we were going to do it at the end of 2021. And this is where the Waffle House will come out to the building here to show our appreciation for all the employees. And it does include a time when there's a shift change for the Police Department, so all of our officers can participate in that. And that's coming up in May. I'd love for the council, if y'all can participate. I think it starts at, I think it's from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM. So you can get there later if you'd like and still have a, a Waffle House breakfast. So Mayor and council, I'm glad to answer any questions you may have on this. And we do have our staff here as well to answer any specific points. Thank you.
Tom, do you have anything?
I just wanted to, to make a comment. You commented on the, the Atlanta Gaslight project with the Georgetown. I, I think our communication seemed just now today, there's actually going to be some closures of Shandley-Dunwoody. It's going to be overnight work, I believe, tomorrow and Wednesday night, but just so that the, the public is aware that that road will actually be closed for portions tomorrow night and Wednesday night. And also, I just wanted to highlight a meeting with Michael Smith, Councilman Henigan, and myself with the George Department of Transportation to discuss a variety of projects that are ongoing and proposed that'll have a big impact on Dunwoody. We met with a team of people from GDOT for about an hour and a half, and made very clear the, the city's concerns and made some specific requests there. And they have committed to follow up with us on, on each of those items. We also sent a letter directly to GDOT so that there was documentation of that, and they're going to respond formally to that, as well as set up a meeting with the community to address all of those concerns and, and field any additional questions as well. So, because that is important. What they're doing is, is, is very impactful now and will be for a very long time to come. So just wanted to highlight that as well. Thank you.
Um, Tom, so in Eric's report, there was a mention of at least two crashes related to the 285-400 project. I can't reme, did they, even though that's in Sandy Springs, technically the 400-285 interchange, it affects us as much if not more. Did they talk about how they're going to make some improvements or anything? Did you get specifics or not yet?
We, we did ask those questions, and there was, to be perfectly honest, they were responsive, but there was a little confusion. I, I think some of the GDOT members that we were speaking with weren't even aware of some of the issues. And there was also, I guess, different responses of how it would be handled. So, but they are aware of some of the, you know, we had major concerns about the safety with the signage, with the conditions of the roads. And there, there are, they have responded to some of those concerns. We also specifically raised a question with a, very specifically with safety concerns. When we were at the meeting, we addressed the, the head-on collision that occurred right near North Peach Street and, and 285, which sadly resulted in a fatality. And just to emphasize the importance of them addressing these safety concerns. So they're, they're well aware of that, and have committed to, to try and do something for us.
Thank you. John, did you have anything to add?
Hopefully you can hear me. The only thing to add is the fact that they are aware of the signage issues when it comes to the overnight changes that happen in the exit signs, and they were looking to modify those where possible. We are really looking forward to the written reply. There are memo and our written information and requests to GDOT was quite extensive, and we're looking forward to their written reply. But the meeting, they listened to all of our concerns and seemed responsive, but couldn't confirm or couldn't confirm every change that we wanted, but we're looking forward to their written replies.
Thank y'all for going. Appreciate y'all taking this on. Catherine, do you have any questions for Eric?
I had a long list of questions for Eric, and he was kind enough to call me, meet with me, and follow up with me. So I want to thank you for your responsiveness.
Stacy?
Actually, I'm glad you brought up the 285 accidents, because it, in the police report, it said it was due to flooding on the Collector Street. So is that something, I mean, we have our thunderstorm season coming up when it really tends to, is it, is the flooding, I mean, we've had it there before. Is it new because of the work they're doing? Or is there something that they need to do so that it doesn't happen? Michael Smith?
I'm not aware of the specific issue in this case. I know a couple of years ago, they, we had some flooding over a couple, couple of month period, and it had to do with some drains that were clogged as, you know, during the construction. So I can follow up with GDOT and see. But I mean, I, I know once the project's done, I'm sure the drainage will be handled. I imagine it's a result of things being partially done and, you know, all the construction going on out there.
I just, I hate that we had two accidents caused from flooding on the Collectors from 285. And, you know, if you need to step on them to get that, another drain cleared, then step on them. And then my other question, Eric, you had mentioned that the pre-construction meeting with the Perimeter Center East Park, you said it's going to be coming out of the ground soon. Do you have a definition of soon?
Sure. Let me get the exact, Brent, why don't you come up and give them the exact date? But it was a, you, you were there, so.
Right. So where we are right now is, we met with the entire team, project management, contractor, erosion control, everybody was on site. So start walking through the timeline. Where we are right now is, we're getting some middles from the contractor for storm pipe. There was a revision from the cab watershed where we had to change out the type of pipe we're using for the sewer line going out. So they will put the orders in for that material. As you can imagine, right now with all the other delays and getting steel and construction materials, there is a little bit of a backup. So we're waiting to get realistic timelines on when we can get ductile iron pipe and some of our stormwater infrastructure delivered. Once we get that in, we'll have a firm date of when erosion control will go in, and the site will be cleared. So I'm not ready to give an exact date yet until I know exactly when things will start being delivered. So.
And that's a very interesting case, because the cab actually changed, well, I want to say the change is spec. Their spec is productile iron. We didn't realize they had that particular specification. There is a shortage on that. There are other materials that could be used. That's their spec.
Joe?
Overall comment, they had a few questions. I mean, we're doing so much in the community, and it's funny, we're in so in the weeds. We see every day, and you look at the delays in Shandley-Dunwoody. Look at the Georgetown, you remember when things are being built and trails or sidewalks, and there's, it's in the, but then it's there, then it's there, and then you just see it, and it's, wow. And then when it's there, guess what? The people, we've had 41, in the last 10 years, 41% people living in single occupancy homes, homes, condos and townhomes. 41% of the people that live there are new in the last 10 years. So they just expect to see the sidewalks that we've built. They just expect to see Brook run and so on. So I really am proud of us in our fiscal responsibility of leveraging the funds that we have available, plus getting some grants and so on, of doing that. And we're very beneficial with the, the, we were subsidized with, with the PCID and, and the Perimeter Business District to, to help that, to offset those fees to our homeowners. So we are really, we're benefiting. If we were up in Milton,
If we were up in Milton, you know, thank you very much. Um, let me just ask you a quick one on a couple of the, um, specifics. I, I appreciate, you know, first of all, I appreciate the report. Let me tell you, just blocking and tackling what's upcoming. It's, 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 we know what's going on and this is very detailed and it really helps. One thing is nice to hear. I see in the public works, we're putting the RFP now in there. Cause I know, you know, the, the train has left the station. We have a long cycle, right? For how we do capital projects, we come forward and it had been five years ago. It's approved, you know? And then we do some one study and then there's an, and then, then drip, drip. Now we get some budget and we save the money, put it inside a bucket every year. And also we save up and now we're going to do a little bit more, right? As, and then we're going to do some. So, you know, there's these timelines and I don't want to put another slide deck together in a timeline of every project. But maybe, maybe we come back because we have later on the agenda about capital projects. Maybe we have what's in flight today, where we are, that's not built yet. If we have funds set aside, if we've done some kind of design, if we've come some engineering, that might help us in our continued conversations. Um, and the way I say that is because you're talking about the Shandly Dunn Woody peeler in the design phase. So it's like, how much money have we committed to that in the past already? If any, um, and are we currently committed to moving forward with that design? I E. Then we're going to find funding for the, you know, are we ready to commit to fund that project and implement it and so on, right? So maybe we just do an inventory of where we are and, and, and where we've been and where we're going. If we're, and we're going to allocate those funds. I know we have it in the budget, certain funds for, but that would really help just to see. I know just when we talk about that, Eric, thanks. Um, yeah. And then I just, again, I appreciate the, the transparency and the spaulding, shambly done, what are you going on? But do we have an idea when that's going to be?
Yeah. On the spaulding, Shandly Dunn Woody, that one is, you know, we still have a storm, major stormwater pipe to put in at the, kind of at the bottom of the hill there on Spalding. When I say the bottom of the hill, you go through the intersection, depending on the ways you're traveling. And that has to be put in still, and that's a, um, that's going to take a little bit more time because of the utilities that are in place. In that area there, you have the standard utilities, but you also have two huge, when I say huge, I think they're thirty-six inch water lines that are bonded to the city of Atlanta that feed the, uh, hospitals, the main hospitals at Pill Hill. So, so we have to be very careful to get our stormwater pipe around those. So we're looking at some various engineering options. The other part of it is moving fairly, um, quickly now. And I say that too, but of course, a lot of the projects, you know, we do, um, under state law, we have to follow our bid process and go with the, the low bid stuff. And sometimes that doesn't always mean you have the highest time. We've had a, um, that contractor has done a, done a good job getting everything finalized here lately. But utility work is often slow and that's what usually delays a project. Similar to like, we're talking a moment ago about perimeter center east park, you know, at the end of the day, that becomes a user utility portions, the stuff underground that nobody thinks about later, you know, that they come along. But I do want to take this opportunity again to, um, to thank the council. We do have a very talented staff to work through things. And I, I do appreciate y'all's comments and, and positive reinforcement for the, for, uh, staff and my office as well. Thank you.
Yeah. And last quick follow-up. On the, the, the primary funding source for that Shandly Dunn Woody, uh, uh, Spauling project, where was that primary funding source from?
And, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, what do you think? But that, that was just a general fund project. Spaw, excuse me, I'm sorry. Splosted funding as a, out of our, uh, the de cab, or the de cab source. Thank you.
Right. That's from the penny sales tax.
Yes, that's correct.
That was approved by Dunwoody, I mean, that was approved by de cab voters.
That's correct.
wide and we got a per capita and we're putting it back in our infrastructure.
That's correct. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Eric. Next we have our consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments? John?
Yeah, thank you, Lynn. I'd like to at least have a quick discussion on the Atlanta Tree Program.
Okay.
So it, it can be polled or it can be a very short discussion prior.
Let's just have a discussion if you don't need a poll. Richard, can you come up and see if you can answer John's questions? And then if you want it polled after the questions, John, we can do that.
Great. Thank you. And my question, Richard, uh, revolves around the $10,000 maximum to plant a maximum of forty trees. I take for granted that the forty trees of this program will be allocated rather quickly, if not within hours of it hitting the website. That's just my guess. Maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, what if there's a great demand or, you know, request for these trees? Is there a way in which we can up that amount? Uh, where is this money coming from? Is it coming from the tree, uh, the, the, the Dunwoody Tree Program and from prior construction? Explain the ins and outs of the pricing. And if we wanted more than forty trees total in this program, how could we go about doing it?
Yes, from the meeting we had on Friday out in the field, um, we probably met our number one candidate who's going to sign up for this. So, um, it, it was general taxpayer dollars that went into this budget. We can, um, we have to fix our ordinance first because we take recompense in the development community, but those are only permitted for recompense on public property. Admit our code and then free up some additional funds that way.
Okay. So as far as the tree program, it would only be for public spaces, not private front yards. So that's not available. If council wanted to put an extra, let's say just what if, what if council want to put an extra $10,000 towards this program? Because we had a great outcry that they wanted this program. Is Trees Atlanta, uh, able to provide, let's say eighty trees instead of the forty? Or is there, are we locked into forty with the contract?
No, the, the, they lock in the prices. It's the, the cost for them to pick them up, uh, transfer them out here. They bury them, um, and they maintain them for two years.
Right. No, I'm well aware of the, the work that's involved that they do. And I like the program. I'm just wondering what if we wanted more than forty? So I'm just trying to understand if that's, if that was possible. It sounds like what you're telling me that it might not be.
I will meet with, uh, Linda and we'll discuss it. We could possibly bring back a budget amendment if there's funds available.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was my only question. I just wanted a quick update on how that program would work if, uh, we wanted more than forty.
I think what John is asking, just because some clarification, so let's say that sixty people put their names in. And we, you come, can trees at land, if we can fund it, can trees at land a plant more trees? Is that what you're essentially asking, John? Yeah.
Correct.
Yes.
I'll check with them.
Okay.
Certainly can. Um, they felt like forty was plenty for this year. So.
And we don't really, this will be a first year. And if it's successful, we can choose to continue it. Right. All right. Uh, anybody have any other questions on the consent agenda? Joe?
I just want to also make sure, I appreciate that buried inside the, uh, meeting minutes that we all see this. You know, the council had a retreat, uh, twenty-first and twenty-second of March. And there's a list of twenty-eight action items there, sitting down there that we worked through and annotated right there, twenty-eight action items that we felt that were strategic priorities for staff and so on to work on here. So I appreciate having that transparency to show what we did, what we were, and what we're going to be working on. So thank, thank you, Eric and staff.
Anybody else?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Tom, second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. Sharon, do you need to read this or no? Sorry.
We're moving to business items now, authorization to recognize $10 million of American Rescue Plan funding as revenue replacement to create the ARP two fund. Jay Benicki.
Mayor and council, uh, talking about taking a list from the retreat and having a list of actionable items. You get to cross off one in about two minutes, hopefully. During the retreat, uh, you discussed the American Rescue Plan funding. It was one of the first ones that we've had as a group since the final rules have put out. And one of the things that got talked about and it's on the screen at the moment was adjusting the original budget that was proposed to, uh, coincide with the new changes in the, in the final rules. In the budget the council proposed and passed last year, 1.5 million of the eighteen million for the American Rescue Plan was to be used as revenue replacement. In other words, help solving financial issues. The city is very healthy at this point, and we've discussed and we gave a briefing on the financial health, that that 1.5 isn't needed at this. We also have found out the new final rules changed the way that revenue replacement could be done. So staff recommended, and this was the discussion, of taking 10 million of that 18 million as we're going to call it revenue replacement. However, the city is going to use it much like it did the CARES funding. What it's going to do is pay for current services that are paid for out of the general fund, free up that funding and create a fund that will be labeled ARP two. Its intent will be exactly the same as ARP one, but it will remove two, as I call them strings. One is the federal procurement rules that are tied to it will no longer be there. It will be subject though to all state and local rules, so there will still be oversight on it. And the second thing that would be removed is the timeframe of it to be spent. So basically, by approving this action, you're going to be creating a new budget of eight million that's federally tied ARP one and federally freed 10 million, both with the intent of American Rescue Plan funding. And I think your discussion focused on that this is probably the most prudent action that you can take. Because what it does is allows you to keep the intent of the program, though also when an area becomes gray, you're able to lose local control and local judgment over it. This is, uh, solely ministerial in nature and we normally would bring it to you and then ask for it to happen at the next meeting. However, we like to expedite it because it's one of those things we want to get on, off books.
And to be clear, you have a reporting deadline at the end of the month, or we have a reporting deadline at the end of the month that this is necessary.
I would love for it to show on that report.
Right. So because it's one of the questions they ask. So does anybody have any questions? This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Joe. Any further discussion or questions? Uh, seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Jay.
Much.
Chief Grogan, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to bring to you tonight, uh, a discussion of the approval of a North Metro SWAT memorandum of understanding. We currently have one with, uh, four cities, us, Sandy Springs, Brookhaven and Johns Creek. Uh, the last MOU was signed in two thousand thirteen. There were some changes that need to be made. Uh, the changes are relative to equipment requirements, maintenance and operations, including liability for damage to equipment. And as you know, the North Metro SWAT team, uh, responds to all four cities in tactical situations. Uh, last year, uh, we had about fifteen callouts, uh, for the SWAT team in all four cities. Uh, and we serve a population close to three hundred thousand. And it's been a very effective, uh, uh, unit for our cities. And this MOU has been reviewed by legal and asked for, uh, the council to approve it in the future meeting, but I'd be, uh, standing here ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Uh, questions? Joe?
Chief, thank you very much for the update. And bottom line, any additional, um, budget requirements them versus what we've done in the past on this item?
Yeah, nothing related to this.
Good, good on the legal review. Thank you. And just low tech, I love the red line to show me the highlight difference. Thank you for putting that in that way for readability. Thank you.
So I have a quick question.
Yes.
So not knowing much about how this works, when there's an incident, do the four chiefs review it afterward? Do you have a, how does that work?
Sure. They, they have a SWAT team commander and they prepare, prepare an after-action report that's sent out to all four of us. And we review it and then periodically talk about those, uh, responses.
And is the commander, how is that person, does that rotate or is it based on what city or?
Uh, it's typically been, uh, mostly from Sandy Springs, since they have the largest contingent of officers on it. We have, uh, six or seven right now. And the other cities, uh, Johns Creek has, I think they're down a few right now, but, uh, about six. And then Brookhaven has about six or seven as well. Sandy Springs has, I think, about fifteen.
And we're remarkably the smallest city of those four, population wise. Okay.
And we have, uh, several supervisors on it. Uh, Lieutenant Krieg is one of the team commanders.
Okay.
Serves in that capacity.
All right. Thank you. Consent, consent, next time it comes up, whenever you're ready to bring it to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Plateau.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to discuss a twenty twenty-one budget amendment. This is another housekeeping item. It's for two funds. It's our grant fund and our municipal court fund. It's really just cleaning up some activity from the end of the year, November and December in particular, um, to align expenditures with our budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, sorry. Um, just trying to get my iPad to work. Um, anybody have questions?
Thanks, Richard. Um, might've been out last week, but, um, thank you for putting in, it was, it was buried, it's in the, uh, the PDFs. In the resolution, the third page had the budget accounting fund number. I know that's purely administrative, but I was looking for, you know, what fund number is you putting the bucket into versus the other fund? And it's, I see it. So anyway, thanks for having that in there. I found it. Thank you.
John, did you have anything?
No. Good for consent for me.
Okay. Um, I have a quick question that probably isn't totally appropriate to ask here, but it's, it's not inappropriate, but I'm going to do it anyway. So do we have an idea over the last two years, if there was an increase in cost of municipal court because of our COVID precautions? And also related, a decrease in revenue because traffic was less?
I prefer to get back to you.
No, no, I know. No, I'm not putting you on the spot and this can be consent. But I think it would be interesting to know long-term, just because historically we should learn what we need to learn from COVID.
Absolutely.
And here comes Jay.
The municipal court clerk and I have discussed this on and off since COVID started, is there's this whole chicken egg argument. People on the streets, cops on the street, and it's, it's actually, we'd like to look into it, but it's going to be almost impossible to pinpoint which action is the one that changed it, because in some cases, we've caught up with a backlog.
Okay.
So it's actually kind of expedited us. Um, again, I don't think it's put anything where it would be something that would be on the radar to look at it this time.
Right. Okay. Thank you. All right. So that's consent. Everybody was okay with that for consent. Thank you. So the next time we'll see this, it'll be on consent. Mr. Vinicki, you can come back up.
Mayor and council, unlike the last one, this presentation is going to take a little bit longer, but it's designed to do that. Um, what you have on here and let me make sure. Can you see it on your screens?
Yeah.
Got it now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, during the retreat, the council, and actually let's even back up and give kind of context to this over the past, uh, two, two and a half years or so. One thing that this council and the council before it started the ball rolling on improving the financial acumen of the city. And some of the things that started the ball rolling was, and some of you on this day is right there pushed for it, a truly funded capital plan. Three years ago, four years ago, there were plenty of plans on shelves that said, this is what we would like to build in the city. This is what we would like to improve, but they were dreams at that point. There was push from some of the council up here to make it so that it's funded. So what happened was two years ago in the budget process, a true five-year funded capital plan was approved. It was the first one, and I like to call it fully funded. Everything in that plan can be built and can be funded. Revenues are slightly conservative, so we earn a little bit more during the year. And expenses are a little bit higher than what'll be spent. So in case overages come, we can, we can solve them. So doing that was the first prudent step in a long-term process in making the city financially. And I'm going to use it adult because we're at the teenager years right now. We're in our teens and that's the way we, we're, we're, we're progressing. The second thing after addressing a capital plan was the COVID pandemic. And one of the things I praise the members of this council on is March of twenty twenty, we're all in a panic. Uh, the finance director, Linda Neighbors and myself are looking at each other. We had no idea what revenues would do. We had no idea how things would be impacted, but yet this council took action by draconianly reducing revenues because we didn't know what would happen and also reined in expenses on the department. So basically they held back. Now, the one thing we did know that this would happen, that if revenues recovered, which they have, and the department still contained the under expenditure. and the department still contained the under expenditure part, we would gain a little bit of fund balance. During the retreat, we talked as a group about how that fund balance is now at the point it can be used for capital opportunities. So for those that aren't interested in bond programs or the like, one of the things that the council has done is saved away money to help with short-term needs. It's a very good action on everybody's part up here in looking at what the needs of the city are. The next things that happened was last year, we formed two working groups who took all of the capital transportation projects that are in the plans. The dreams on the shelf, the same thing with the park ones and ranked them. And this is one of the things that Brent Walker and Michael Smith and I will all say, this is an accident we kind of walked into. It was the best guidance I've ever seen from a council giving to staff. Because basically Michael Smith was able to take his, that list of priorities and create a budget process out of it for the budget you have before you. So what did we do? We said we need to dovetail that. So at the retreat this year, we created a five-year operating forecast for the city. Now, like all things, operating forecasts, once you start getting farther and farther out, you're three, four and five, they tend to be more guesses than estimates. But it's a good sensitivity analysis to know where the city is headed, what its needs are in the future and whether or not its revenues will match to it. When we discussed that, we discussed the fund balance of it. Right now it's slightly above eight months. And we looked at that and we said, well, one of the things we can recommend to the council at this point in time is as I call it shaving part of that off. So out of that, taking two and a half million dollars, basically 15% of that above the minimum requirement and saying, let's dedicate it to capital projects. So we talked about that. We said, here is a pool of money that we can put to the side and start looking at short-term capital needs that can be done now. The second thing we got into was the sale of a property over in the part of town that could net a six to seven million more. Those two things in conjunction would give the, the council nine and a half million dollars worth of capital to address short-term needs. Now, one of the things that came out of the retreat was that unfunded capitalist ranking from last year. It's not $180 million of projects that will see the light. I can even tell you, looking at the list, half of those projects will not see the light in our lifetime. They are dreams, they're aspirations, but they're a plan. So what we did was council members individually ranked things. And I appreciate every single one of you for taking the effort to go through all my rules and hoops to jump through on trying to fill out spreadsheets and we will teach spreadsheet filling out 101 at another course. But what happened was each council member was allowed to rank 16 of the 95 unfunded projects. You're allowed to give four, a scout, a score of four, meaning your top four priorities, four, three, four, two and four, one. So each of you was playing just as if you were the budget or the finance director. You were saying, if I had the money, this is the order I would do it in. Now, the one thing we wanted to go through is to show you the results for this. And of course it's not doing it. There we go. Okay. So we started looking at it. If you take a look at it, we're looking for short-term capital infusion. So the discussion today is going to show you the results of that action. And here's one thing I need to say. When we talk about this, I'm purposely not showing the dollar figures at this time because we need to talk about how the budgeting process works. Essentially you have 9.5 million that this council and staff has reviewed is available for funding for short-term capital needs. Ie it must be a one-time expenditure. I can't recommend using it for operating. But you can use it to build, you can use it to repair, you can use it to replace. So, but for instance, if you only have 9.5 billion and you have a $10 million project, your $10 million project, you might want to have a discussion, should be a $9.5 million project. Sometimes funding restraints help to manage the process. So going through that, we went through that each council member was allowed to rank. And in the supporting documentation in your agenda package are two score sheets. I won't put the score sheets up there because they're four pages long a piece, but basically what they did was they said, here it is based off the score, the four, the three, the two of the one. And then the second ranking was how many council members actually said ranked it in their top 16. This, the line of 16 projects is somewhat an arbitrary number. It just kind of worked out that way. But in this process, it made it so that the cream rose to the top collectively, but individually done. The council basically gravitated around 10 projects when this was, when this was all finished. So I just want to go through, out of the 95 projects, 46 of them were ranked by at least a council member. Now, this is to show people the list totals to 180 million. This is back to where I say, some of these won't see the light of day. Just because it's a zero does not mean it won't be funded, doesn't also mean it won't be funded this year. This is true capital ranking by priority. There was one project that every single council member here put on their list of their top 16. So if you guys were voting in a top 16 poll, this would be number one. However, it wasn't the one that received the highest score when you added all the scores together. Eight projects were ranked by six of the four councilmen. So nine out of the 95 projects had six of y'all voting for it. Okay? 37 projects were ranked by three to one and 46 projects weren't ranked by any councilman. Now let's go through in the unweighted scoring and what this is, is from top to bottom, and I've taken out the numbers one through nine, just not to put on there. But to go through, and I'm going to go through this list pretty quickly because I want to show how we can kind of congregate this together before we start the discussion for the evening. Unweighted scoring, in other words, the number of council members who said this was what they would fund. The Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center and Library Facility Expansion, top of the list. Austin Elementary School Site implementing the park design. And like all things to tell everybody, some of these projects a little bit overlap, which is why we're going to talk about them as a group in a little bit. Looking at the shambly Dunwoody Road improvements that we're talking about at the last meeting. This is one of those that you can kind of almost put that in the category of the village. We had categories on there, Dunwoody Village, one was labeled green space, one was slated street grid. A lot of this, and we will do this in the next iteration of the capital project thing, we will clean up a lot of the language. We just left it in there because it's easier to do it that way instead of trying to clean it up and then do it. The next iteration of the capital budget, it will all be cleaned up differently. Then we've got two different multi-use paths and we've also got the Dunwoody Nature Center. There were eight projects tied at number 10. So you had a very good top nine out of this. Now, if we took and used the weighting scourge, scoring, everything goes except at the bottom. Dunwoody Nature Center Facility Expansion versus Wetland, Borland, Borderwalk and Bridge Replacement. Those flip nine and 10. So what did this do? It gave you a list of a true top 10 projects for that y'all to have the subsequent discussion which will occur tonight. Now, this does not mean that number one project on this list is going to get funded, does not mean it will get built, but it is the beginning of a discussion point. So the first thing we did was we said, let's take a look at how these group. Take a look how they group naturally. One, a future park at Austin site. Two, the Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center. Three of these projects were, as I'm going to call it, village-related, a little bit different in scope on the, on the multimodal transportation, but they were all village-related. One was general land acquisition, which is such a broad category. It's one of those I kind of like to take off. I'd like to be specific on land acquisition. Two were related to trails and paths and two related to the Dunwoody Nature Center. So in essence, you've got basically maybe six things to talk about in terms of this $9.5 million. That also doesn't mean that all of these might get funding or some of them might get none. The discussion from here and subsequently after this is where that will happen. Kind of color coding them here and you will have to excuse me as the colorblind person on staff. People have already complained to me about what this is. It looks fine to me. But in essence, there's basically six categories and I put the price tags on it. But again, don't look at the price tags. I want to put them out there for disclosure. They were what you saw when you were scoring. But in essence, the discussion we need to have tonight is this 9.5 million of one-time capital infusion, which is a good way to plan. Basically you've saved pennies for a rainy day or using it to doing things that are short-term capital need. Here are the things collectively the council worked at and collectively the council got to. Essentially you work like a finance director, work like a budget director. He said, this is what we need to get to. It's, I can look at everybody's face on here. I'm either boring you or it's just, oh, get to the point. What we're trying to do here is now have the discussion. This is the point. You've got 9.5 billion of capital here. It's gravitated towards these. I'm going to kind of open ended discussion this. First, I'll defer to the mayor on this, on this. Where do you see this going? Off of, excuse me, off the project list, your first things from seeing how the council ranked this.
We're very similar.
Everything gravitated towards the same thing. And just for the record, everybody did this independently.
Absolutely.
Nobody looked at each other's little cheating sheets or anything. Even emailed everybody separately to make sure that nobody accidentally replied to all or anything.
Right.
But you came up with six topics for this. Six topics. We're looking at Austin. We're looking at the village. We're looking at trail systems. We're looking at land purchases. We're looking at a cultural arts center and we're looking at the Dunwoody Nature Center. I would like to point out, and there are certain people in the audience who would like for me to point out this. Looking at me, I can feel his eyes right now. There are two of these projects which do have matching funds tied to them. And they are both the art center and the nature center. There's a significant amount of match there. This is where discussion with council comes into play. Because the match is something that may make something weight a little bit heavier than something that is unmatched. For instance, I will say, even though the Austin park is something that a lot of people here love, no match money tied to it right now. However, with the art center there is. So going for short-term impact, it's hard for me to find a 50% return on any investment right now, much less 100% return. So that's something for the council to discuss and to think about. We'd like to take one of two parts. One is open the floor up today on it. But also, or feedback for staff to come back and come up with a more detailed recommendation at a later program. Both of those are acceptable, but this is the forum for us to begin discussion. Any questions at this point about the methodology or anything about the results that stand out to?
Anybody? No. No question. Okay. Keep going.
So at this point, what I'd kind of like to do is on feedback from y'all, at this point, staff is, again, we must sell the, the property that we're looking at before any of this can be discussed or in it. The 2.5 million of available funding is a definite. Staff feels good that we can carve that off the fund balance and use it for capital improvements. I would like to defer any official recommendation on the other part until buildings are sold.
I think we don't, I mean, I think tonight would be a good time for people to ask questions. But I don't, we're certainly not making decisions tonight. I don't think we need, this is only for discussion. And so I, I don't even know that we need a huge discussion. I think our, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think our rankings, we were pretty consistent. We did the assignment. We've done the work. You're reporting back. Let's see what happens with revenue. Let's see where we close on the other. But we certainly can discuss questions. And I have one question actually about process. So one helpful component might be time. Like, should we then go back and look in to say that if, if, I don't exactly know how to phrase it because we're certainly never, we don't have all the money at once. But you know, you, are there projects that we could, that are time sensitive? Like we've already spent money on design, we've invested this much time. How does that play into the next phase of decision-making? And they might, and also staff needs to make sure we didn't miss anything critically important. Like if there's a deals, so talk about matching money. We have lots of matching funds from PCID. So did we miss any pro, like that's really important. Did we miss any projects that PCID is ready to help fund?
Here, here's a, that's a good point. It brings up a good suggestion. Is one of the things that happened was we, y'all lickety-split, got this all done so that we could get it on the agenda to talk about tonight. I have no problems with Brent and Michael and myself going back and combing through this. Again, we worked a little bit for speed on this to present it so that, again, back to deliverables from the retreat. I wanted to make sure that this was at the top of your list and on your radar. We will very gladly go back and comb through this with a staff recommendation either in two weeks or four weeks. And that'll, that'll probably be the best course of action.
I think it's really important and also a priority that was clear, I think, sorry, my iPad is broken. A priority that's clear, was kind of clear to me at the retreat was the east-west connectivity. And I want to make sure that there aren't gaping holes in this because maybe we didn't label it east-west connectivity. And maybe some of us didn't know what that was, but if you, right, maybe some of us don't really know east-west. But, um, but I think that, I think it's important that we get that data back from staff. Two or four weeks is fine.
Permission to do this is we will take your list, just like Michael and Brent took the original unfunded. We'll use this as, as guidance on it and we'll go from here and come back with you with a direct recommendation.
Right. I mean, I think it's important that we identify that these 10, nine, whatever it ended up being were, you know, our top ranked. But particularly y'all need to, if you can identify what might be missing, that would be really helpful. Anybody else? I'm excited about the process. Joe?
Yeah, there's one, the new federal infrastructure bill, there's a safe streets and roads for all program that they haven't announced the funding mechanisms or the means, but I've heard that it's going to come out. The rules and the application mechanism sometimes in May. It's five to six billion dollars available directly to municipalities. And I, I know that these, some of these projects could definitely fall under there, but again, we, the devil's in the details and you gotta wait to see what those are. For a minute, but it would, yeah, it'd be great to see these projects and then bumped against any other additional grants, matching public-private partnership, those kinds of things as well. Yeah. And, and I just want to make sure we're clear about just blocking and tackling a basic follow-up. What, what did we want to accomplish tonight on this list? Number one. What are the next steps with dates? Number two. And then number three, if and when we should come to a consensus. So I, I think we've addressed a couple of those things.
I think first, the next step is we, two or four weeks, we'll get the staff intertwined report to make sure we didn't miss things. And then when we get to that point, we will then set the date, you know, we'll talk about next steps then. That's what I'm comfortable with.
That works.
And also Congresswoman Macbeth's office is looking for things too. I think I forwarded that.
Michael and I have gone back.
And so one of the, one of the things we talked about was, is making sure that we're grouping our projects in such a way that they're eligible for these grants. In the past, we've done such small segments to keep the costs manageable, which is good if we're paying for it ourselves. But in, in order to receive funding, I think sometimes the amount needs to be larger. And so if we could just make sure that, you know, we're capturing all those dollars.
I just a couple more generic, just, yeah, just, just to see that, you know, it's like, we know that there's unmet needs and we have current funding that we may be seeing. But it's great to have this conversation and we can continue that, but this is really taking it up that capital improvement program that was separate from transportation, separate from parks and wrecks. Now we merge that. Now we can kind of come back to say, yeah, this is our priorities in one list. Continue conversations and having, having public engagement and offer feedback. And, and look at the funding mechanisms to see what the citizens would really like to see. So thank you.
Thank you. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to make a few comments. Yeah, it was very encouraging to me that we came up with a, from a very long list, really focused around a rather shorter list. And I think a lot of that is reflective of the fact that our lists reflect what we've been hearing from the community for the past several years. And in our conversations and our emails and our meetings, what, what the community wants. And I think that's important to note that this isn't necessarily what seven people sitting up here want. This is what the community has been asking us to do. And I think the most important part of this whole process is how do we go from aspirational to actionable on all these projects? Especially the ones that we prioritize. You know, and I think one part of that is, you know, you alluded to it, you know, projects that have either matching funds or that are shovel-ready. So, you know, if there's a project that's ready to go and all they need is, is, is an approval, then, then obviously that's something. And, and, and I would even say, without putting the cart before the horse, I don't know that we need to act collectively on all of these at once. If there's stuff that's ready to go now, maybe perhaps we can escalate those projects a little more to, to, to start get, start getting the ball rolling.
Once we get some clarity on funding.
Yeah. And while I have you up here, not to get off topic, but, but I just want to give you the opportunity here because there were some, some questions raised in public comment about city revenues and bonds and taxes and all of that. And I just wanted to know if you wanted to respond to that.
Well, one of the things, and, and pretty much this dovetails into it because this is the perfect example of saving money for a project. The council itself was very conservative. When COVID hit, I mean, our biggest chunk of revenues we lost was hotel motor. It plummeted. I mean, there were times when we're looking at borderline zero for months. I mean, it was getting close. So the council took action for that and also departments restrained spending. And departments kept doing that. Now, what we're seeing now is kind of a little bit ironic. We're coming out of our shell a little bit. So we're starting to see the things. For instance, I always like to use Brook Run Park as an example. Came online during COVID. Okay. We were going to be gangbusters for that. It's slowly getting up there. But one of the things the council did at the retreat that was probably the next best step is started to look at an operating forecast and started to notice how certain things about how the city was created do not mimic what it is now. For instance, and we will all use this, there is a study out there created by a very fine institution to our east. Okay. That said that Brent Walker could run this park's budget on $300,000 a year. If you'd index it for inflation to be $450,000 a year, that wouldn't mow the grass. Okay? The study itself that was done for the incorporation of Dunwoody doesn't match the needs of the citizens. And it was said earlier, your churn in a city like this, anywhere between, depending upon what. And it was said earlier, your churn in a city like this, anywhere between, depending upon what metric you want to use, one-third of the residents here to two-thirds, somewhere in that number, weren't here when the city was incorporated. The citizens here want the park plan. They also want it run like the premier park it is. And I think the council took the best step by starting an operating forecast on this. Now, we went through all the caveats of we're limiting revenue growth. So growth may be a little bit better in the future. Do we need anything this year? The answer's no. But the, the flags need to be raised that when Austin comes online, when Vermont comes online, when the municipal contracts are rebid in three years, when PC art opens, and just generally with inflation and salaries and healthcare in general, the city will have to look at it. So the council, starting to do an operating forecast to see where we are, is the best thing that you could have done at this point in time.
And we're going to have a series of just announced town hall meetings on city finances in May. We'll do one a week, same town hall topic, but um, in May, starting in May.
Literally just.
Literally just announced, literally just planned three hours ago. So, hot off the presses.
Yeah, it is just for, for the public's sake. We plan because in this type of talk, we can't do it in a vacuum. You need public input and you need to hear their responses also. And we'll do, and I, like I said, you know, it's gonna be at night. I'm gonna get a pizza sometime between work and the thing. So I may be bringing a pizza with me, but we'll be glad to do this and also to answer citizen questions. Because one of the things that's most valuable is to actually interact and explain how things are. Because not a lot of people understand, and I'm going to say, I work in the biz, it's tough for me to understand it some days too. But I think interaction with the public and to get their feedback and also to answer their own questions. So for instance, we'll get the typical, and this is my, one of my favorite ones, is when people talk about the taxes went up because things were not rolled back. One thing Dunwoody did was froze residential property values for all homeowners. So if you've lived here since the inception of the city, you are paying the exact same dollar amount, not even indexed for inflation.
And could you remind us what the largest portion of our bill goes to?
The largest portion of the bill that you receive at your house?
Right.
Goes to the school system.
And that is not frozen, just so people are clear. So that is not frozen under the state law. School taxes were not frozen.
And, and one of the things, and when we do the town halls, one of the things that evolved from, and for, for those that want to know, we discussed what was presented at the retreat. It's going to be that re- redone a little bit. But as all of y'all saw, the city of Dunwoody, the lowest tax rate in the county. Because you, not only is it 2.74, but if you're a homeowner here, it's 1.74. So I don't know of any city that can even get close to that. And we're talking people whose homeowners dues, and I love that, and for those council members who do, how much you pay in your homeowners dues, it was more than you paid in property taxes to the city this year. Not as much as you paid to the school. But, and the county uh, is using the E House, so that distorts it a little bit. But if you take your typical tax bill, the whole bill, you pay three, $4,000 about fi- that what Councilman Secunder is holding up there is a, I didn't plan that one. It is about, is about 5% of the total. So what we're talking about here is the city is just 5% of what you pay annually in taxes.
Actually, Jay, mine is half of 1%.
I need to see the tax commissioner about the problems with your.
My, 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 my total tax bill, $5,380 and my city was $270, $270. That's half of 1%.
No, but we'll work on that.
I'm not doing the math.
Just in my head, I think you're not doing the math right. I think it's 5%. So, um, all right, stop. All right. So are we all okay where we're going with the capital project list? We have a strategy. We're all okay. John, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in quickly that both Lynn, yourself and Tom, your comments regarding what, where are we missing? That's very important. We need to verify those aspects when it comes to PCID and others. And I know we all have items that may or may not be in that top 10. When we're looking at short-term, you know, capital projects, there may be some low-hanging fruit that actually affect human beings, uh, you know, and the use of our city. When I was looking at the, uh, when I was judging, I was looking at the Dunwoody Nature Center, their boardwalk has fallen apart. I mean, that may be low-hanging fruit that can be done. The, the restroom that we're, we're already putting in a restroom into one new park. If there's a restroom that needs to be done, that at the same time, at a relatively low cost, meeting human needs for our citizens is, to me, is low-hanging fruit that should be done. So I just want to make we sure that we look at things from that perspective and the price versus the benefit uh, long-term on short-term items. So, thank you.
That's the next phase of discussion.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else?
I just want to say thanks for putting together so quick, um, especially when someone tried to sneak a 17th project in and the list had to be, uh,
We won't say which council member ran the 17 projects and all of a sudden the spreadsheet wouldn't add up. Why doesn't it add up? No, I thank you all for, all for going through the exercise. And I will have to say, this is one of the good, best things out of the retreat was the list of deliverables. And this was to us walking out like, let's get this ball rolling off of this. Because this is short-term capital needs and there are things that can be done instantly.
Thank you. Public comments? I have two cards. Uh, Ms. Col- Colth Burke, I'm really having trouble with my mouth this morning. Margaret. Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Okay. Um, I'm concerned about the Vermont park. It isn't a huge piece of land and I think it needs to be a simple park. One that the boys and girls can ride their bikes to. So not a lot of parking places for cars, but a lot of spaces, bike, bike racks for the boys and girls. And I'd like to see uh, some trees planted. And I'd like to see um, playground equipment for three ages of children's development. So that the little ones can have fun things and the older ones can have fun things and the middle-aged kids can have fun things too. And I'd love to see two, two truckloads of dirt brought in so kids could have a hill to climb. We don't have very many hills in Dunwoody and I think that they'd love it. I really do. So um, of course, I'd like restrooms, water fountains and picnic tables with coverings. Not just picnic tables out in the open. And people can bring their badminton sets, their croquet games, and the kids can bring their soccer balls and just have like a backyard, a big backyard. Not a lot of organized stuff, if, if you'd consider that. Okay, my second subject is, it breaks my heart to see how developers clear-cut land. I know it's easier to put in the pipes and the drainage and all that stuff. But is there uh, anything on the, the city records that say if they take out 100 trees, they've got to plant so many? Does anybody check on that? Okay, do they require the builder to water them for two years so that they live? That's another thing that, that could be done. Um, we want Dunwoody to stay a beautiful city. So we've got to replace trees that are torn down. And I want to know how does a neighborhood get sidewalks? I live in Georgetown community. It's 108 homes. And right next door are 52 new condos that I didn't want to be built. And these people are walking in my neighborhood, pushing strollers, kids on bikes, learning to ride bikes, old people walking, even a guy with his, with his walker comes up my street. We do not have a safe street. People tear through that street like crazy. And um, I think we need, we need sidewalks, at least on one side of the road. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, can you talk to um, about sidewalk, neighborhood sidewalks? Mr. Smith is going to help you with the neighborhood sidewalk question. Um, Jason Metzger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Um, I'll be brief, uh, so we can all get out of here. I just wanted to say I appreciate all the work that, that you all have put into um, the city and also into this uh, capital um, planning project, capital projects planning. I think it was a really uh, great endeavor and it, you know, obviously you have a lot, lot more work to do on it. But I just wanted to say that I really um, support funding, finding funding for these capital projects to move some of these along. As Jay said, a lot of these probably won't happen in our lifetime, but I tend to be impatient. I would like to see some of them move a little quicker. Um, you know, the trails, the parks, the village improvements, the, the cultural centers, there's, I look at it as not a cost on the citizens, but as an investment in our city's future. And I know many of you do as well. Um, so I, it just makes it a much more desirable place to live than it already is. And um, it allows us to uh, enjoy our city and spend time in our city. And importantly for our businesses, spend our money in our city instead of having to go to neighboring cities to, you know, ha- have a good meal, have, enjoy time with uh, in the parks and whatnot. So, I, again, just uh, am in support of uh, the funding and exploring options for finding some additional funding and expediting some of these projects. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That ends public comment. I don't see any other cards. Are you coming back? Do you want, do you want to do it again? Yeah, yeah, you can. You'll need to fill out a card, but you can do it after you speak. You can come up here. If you'll give them to Sharon, do you want them back? Do you want them back? Okay, Sharon, I'll make sure we see them. Thank you. Thank you. Um, all right, that's the end of public comment. Eric, your turn.
Yes, ma'am. We did an executive session tonight for real estate and litigation.
Okay, real estate and litigation. Okay, um, council comment. John, anything? Tom, Rob, Catherine, Stacy?
I have one thing. I would like to acknowledge that Dunwoody High School Girls um, soccer team, they are 12-0 in their region. They are region champs once again. And tomorrow at North to Cab Stadium at 5:30, they will begin the first round of uh, the state playoffs. And I was looking at their practice schedule and they practice a couple of times a week at Brook Run. So I'm thankful that we, the city, can provide a, a practice space for them. And I wish them the very best of luck. Go Wildcats.
Go Wildcats. Joe?
Um, this may be a comment, but I'll have to follow up with an email with Ms. Ms. Shul in there, the issue. So I hope that that's being addressed. If she's left, I'm.
So it's been a struggle. We've had this in other neighborhoods, including my own neighborhood, where, I don't know if Richard wants to briefly talk about it, just or, or if there's anything we can do to address this challenge of people building particularly homes, but it can be commercial properties too, where they certainly become a nuisance or nuisance-like to the neighbors.
Yes, I've been dealing with Ms. Shula for two years now. Um, she's frustrated because the process is taking so long. Um, unfortunately, our ordinance says you have to get an inspection every six months. So that's what the builder has done. Uh, his last inspector was in November. He hasn't done anything. Uh, the house currently has a stop wore on it due to some erosion control things. He fired his contractor. It's just one thing after another. Um, plus the pandemic with, whichever one has been dealing with. But we have lit a fire under him, hopefully to get something moving. So.
And one of the challenges, as I understand it, is, is that essentially local governments have to or should follow the international building code thing, Majica? And um, for lack of a better word, and varying from that is very difficult because it's important consistency.
We're only, we follow the international building code because they say we should, but we don't have to.
Okay. So we've talked about this before and we made some changes, remember, in terms of when you have to repay a permit and all that. But there ought to be, maybe we should look at Eric, something, if there's something you think that can prevent this, because this is the third that I know of in the last few years. And even pre-pandemic, this was an issue. There was one over off of Robert's Drive. There was one off of Happy Hollow, not off of Happy Hollow, off Peeler and Coldstream in that area. So, all right. Okay.
There was a email we received from Ms. Patty Baker, um, I think it was last night. And I didn't have time to send a long email, but I, I will send her a bullet point. She was asking about Tilly Mill and putting in some separated uh, facilities there. And I just want to kind of peel back the layer on it. First of all, that project never had bike lanes originally. It was just a sidewalk project, right? So Ms. Baker's concerned about the safety of using that facility. We do allow riding on the sidewalks for the time being, right? Um, we had at our retreat, talk about safe streets. So we're, we've got that ball rolling and we hope to have more of that work in progress to work towards safe streets, i.e. the big picture, big dollar infrastructure, but also on that, what we call a quick build design thing. We're going to be looking at that over the coming months of how we can potentially just do street calming and so on. So, um, we did that. I also just want to throw out, working on the back end of a process, it's called Vision Zero. It's, it's called street safety. I attended a uh, a webinar two weeks ago on it. There's a national effort there. Um, Tom and I are going to be meeting with PCID folks, talk about trails. I'm going to ask them to actually host a luncheon about safe streets with, bring in the neighbors, Brookhaven, Sandy Springs, Dunwoody, Peachy Corners, anybody who wants to show up. Um, the folks from Vision Zero can come in and give a brief presentation about safe streets and the whole, you know, pivoting towards that met um, um, new paradigm. And then at the tail end, we can talk to our folks at Michael Smith and so on and talk about, now, these, the, what's the difference between a cycle track and a, and a two-way, you know, what's a one-way, what is all these things? You know, what do these facilities mean? What is a crosswalk? What are the design characteristics and features? So it's getting into that some bolt. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about trying to arrange a luncheon, a couple hour, sometime in the next few months, have PCID hosted. We can come in there and kind of learn about, about safe streets and, and all that stuff. Because it's really, you know, we have the retreat, but you know, when do we have our own little employee lunch and learns? And how we all have a little subject and bring it up. So I'm thinking about doing that through the PCID. So, anyway, um, thank you very much.
Anybody have anything else? All right. Um, I need a motion for executive session for legal and.
I make a motion, we exit to executive session for purposes of real estate and legal.
Maybe by Stacy, second by Rob. Um, any further discussion? None. We will see you in executive session. We'll be back in a few minutes.
The tigers.
You ready?
Okay, thank you. I didn't be able to share the job.
Good job.
Uh, any questions? I didn't.
We're done.
We're good.
We're good.
You gotta be quick.
We're fishing.
I wasn't used to that.